Doug, have you gotten any update on Casey's?
No.
Cause I got a, just an automatic response from ABD that their license will automatically be renewed in fifty-one days. So.
Okay.
I didn't, I mean by all means I can stop that, but I didn't know if I should or what's happening.
Yeah, you gotta contact the Casey's gen- and angry, right?
I'd have a look on the application for it, yeah.
Cause I, I know the conviction's in, so that part, um, but they haven't received. So like, I stopped at the post office and checked on the delivery of their notice.
Mm-hmm.
And the post office is like, unsure what it was.
Great, so maybe try to reach out to the corporate office and scan and email it to them.
Yeah, I can do that.
They imagine they're gonna pay it.
Yeah, oh yeah, they, they.
I would think they would.
Yeah, it's a matter of them getting the notice that they have.
Right.
If you've got that, just email that to me, and then I'll call them and.
Okay.
Make contact.
I'll write us up and get that to you first in the morning.
Yeah, it'd be nice to clear that.
Well, I just let that come through, I'm like, mm, technically if they don't pay, we shouldn't be allowing it to be renewed then, but.
Right. Correct.
I see you have another car car. Are you doing for, um, what's it doing up there? Are you, you're not servicing that yet?
My kids.
Oh, he's, he is, you see one of them.
He's a seater.
He's gonna see you.
Probably a good thing he brings it up here so people don't see him. They'll probably kill him if they. He's like in the jail section, there's ten people in jail, he's already got five of them in there. Just him. He's, uh.
Hey, I'm serious, huh?
He's a, he's a good getter. It's all, it's usually all, mostly all dope.
Well. That's a nice looking car, I mean, that really caught my eye, and that station wagon look and.
Dragon.
Is it?
Yeah. Get, and then one, yeah.
Well, must be making money.
The only one you've ever seen. You take the Walties on the way to jail, how many people?
You can always take away his pillow.
Is there another one? Where's that?
Right next to the other one?
He never even touched it, he just got close, it scared him.
The, uh, the police chief that's been announced.
Yep. It'll get all the way out there and then it'll be somewhere.
Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be. We go through, actually be, if I was here now, this week yet.
I've got a decision.
Yeah, no, I think it'll, it'll transition smoothly.
Yeah, I think that's, during the hours of some warning.
Yeah, we have, he's coming, did he use his next, this week and actually, actually coming
And then the other thing with this is, um, when this whole process was started, there is a current easement that runs through that property that, because we have a water main that runs through there, and that easement was not in the correct location. So, this new plat, final plat also, um, goes and puts the easement where it needs to be for, for that paperwork. So, this has been, uh, gone through by Travis, our city engineer and I, as well as, uh, the people responsible for doing this. And, um, P and Z met on it, and they approved, or recommended approval on it.
Any questions? May you wish to approve? Wish to approve or second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Close. Session possible action and reference approving no parking areas on West Third Avenue and North Jefferson Street or on Sports Complex.
As you are aware, we're gonna be having spring soccer out at the sports complex. So, I called the residents along West Third Avenue. I've talked to all of them, or been in contact with all of them, but one. There's three residents along the north side and then one on the south side that own the property there. So, the thought with this, um, or what I'd like to propose to you, uh, we can't have parking on both sides because it'll be possibly through. So, the north side of the street, um, along West Third would be all no parking all the way across. And then, no parking on Jefferson Street on the west side. Couple of reasons why. One, for the homeowners on the north side, there won't be cars or people, um, crossing the street. They won't have to worry about hitting anything along there as they leave their driveway or anyone. The other reason, uh, for allowing parking on the, the side that we are proposing is hopefully nobody has to cross the street because they're gonna be using the sidewalk, which is on the south side of the street and the east side of the street. And then, um, the other thing I've, I'd like to bring up to you is on the south side of Third Avenue. You can see up there by four twenty-three, assuming everybody's looking at this here, this map. About five or ten foot west of the driveway of four twenty-three, I would like to put a no parking sign from there to corner. That would allow, uh, clean access to their, to their driveway as well as backing out if they have to back out. And then down in front of the sports complex where there's two drives, five to ten feet, uh, each direction off those drives and no parking in between there. Main purpose for this is, um, obviously for clearance for pulling in and out. And then, as you see right down the middle, that's gonna be the main crosswalk over to the new park. So, I would like just to be for better clearance for pedestrian traffic all the way across there. This is just a proposal. Um, I think it's the, it's a, the safest option. Like I said, um, I talked to most of the residents and, uh, the ones that I spoke to agreed with this.
So, on Jefferson Street, that'll go all the way to Market?
Correct. I don't know beyond, I'd have to look. I don't know if there's no parking right now on that side down to Myers Meadow or not.
I don't think there is. Down by Myers, uh, in front of Myers Meadow on Jefferson, going like two up by the barns there.
On the east side. I don't think there's no parking on the west side by the barns and stuff there. I think that's all legal park there.
If we, yeah. How many spots?
You're in a real.
I'm sorry.
So, I'm like down at you. I live on Third Avenue, um, right next to the sports complex. Um, and I spoke earlier with Brandon in regards to the no parking and, um, yes, the, the parking should, uh, and talking to the neighbors, uh, it should be on, obviously close to the sidewalk, okay? Um, my other concern would be, um, not only the parking spot, but also the signage of speed coming through there. Because right now, it's a racetrack. In addition to that, um, should there be consideration of one way in and one way out of that, um, complex?
What do you mean it's a racetrack? It's closed, isn't it?
No, it's open.
Just now.
Just open.
Just one.
Friday.
You move, no, both sides?
Right.
Yeah, both sides is open.
There's no one here.
Yeah, just Friday, yeah.
So, it's been like that this weekend?
Yes.
Well, I, I agree, there should be some signage of, uh, speed limit.
For sure.
Jefferson doesn't have any. They got Parkhead. There's nothing posted on either side, the south Jefferson.
Well, there needs to be.
Yeah.
B there needs to be a force.
Do we, um, look into putting speed bumps in? Is there, there's some.
There are two.
There's two in the sports complex, right?
Yep.
But, I mean, do we look into putting them on, like, in front of Ted's house on that street too, or? I mean, try to slow down. I mean, obviously, it should be, it'll be posted, but I mean, posting, I mean, that's if you want to follow it, I mean.
Can we lower the posted limit for like fifteen or twenty? I don't know.
I believe Texas, the order is to park at fifteen.
Right.
Well, is this gonna be a city, technically a city street both ways, right?
Yeah.
To park on both sides of the street.
Right. I, you can, you can, I think it'll be default to twenty-five. But you can make it wherever you want in that zone. You can do specials in those areas as well.
I'd have to look. I, I thought it might already be specified by the park, but then like downtown.
It would be like down in front of the park, out here fifteen.
Right.
We also have cars that have been sitting on it for a year. You know, that was because of, we blocked it, which is cars sitting there up by the barns. Now, have been forever. Those would have to be.
So, the parking on Jefferson, are you just saying going up to like the entrance of Myers Meadow there, Brandon, or?
Well, I, I, I don't think, to be honest with you, I, I don't know that, I think we're gonna have to do it all the way. Because I, I guess I didn't pay attention, but I've never seen anybody park on the, on the west side. There's cars on the east side, but it's in front of that residence there. So, I think, I think it's, it's narrow. Like, I drove through there. It's narrow, so I don't know that we would want parking on both sidewalks.
I would, I would agree with Brandon too. The west side of Jefferson and the north side of Penn is going to be the preferred no parking area. Your sidewalks are on the east side and the south side. So, keeping the vehicles next to the sidewalks and then keeping the other lane open whichever way. It's gonna be the same lane all the way through that, both directions.
I think somebody asked about parking stalls.
Right, wasn't it a hundred and ten?
It was a hundred and ten parking stalls.
And what's, how many kids are in the program so they're gonna use that South field?
We have a hundred and, between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty kids. But keep in mind, we've had those same numbers down at the city park and the parking down there isn't ideal either. So, this is gonna be a big, this is gonna be a big upgrade in parking compared to the city park.
Agreed. I just.
Yeah, no, I get it.
I think this, this looks very restrictive for overflow, and where's the overflow gonna be?
Hopefully on the south side and the.
East side.
East side. I mean, we're allowing one whole side of the street to be open and closing off the other right side. That'll ensure ambulances and fire trucks can get to that building too or anything like that as well.
Is the east entrance into the complex, the green patch right now, where you have put the road closures? Is that, was that originally planned to be additional parking?
That's a future parking.
Future parking. So, when you have these big events coming in, are you going to open that grass area for additional people to be parking with?
Great question.
Depends on the weather.
That's a great answer. So, the, so the motion is, do we want no parking on the south side and the west side? Is that what we're asking?
No parking on the north side and west side.
I'll make a motion for no parking signs to be placed, north side and west side.
What about along, like, between the entrances?
Probably need to make it so it's easy in and out on those entrances on the.
So, you, you're good with this?
Yeah.
I just, if we, if we run out of parking for some reason, it seems not really well.
Did you say ten feet from the crosswalks too?
Um, there's only one crosswalk, but I was thinking, looking at it, five to ten feet each way to drive, nothing in between?
Okay.
So, the crosswalk's here.
It's open, huh?
So, it'll be wide open.
Correct.
And then, um, five to ten feet from their driveway here to the curb, or to the corner.
Yep.
So, the house is on Third Avenue from the corner, all the way down, that's the side that you don't want no parking?
Correct. Because it's, basically, the people park there. It's on the side of the street where you couldn't get their driveways blocked. And then, they're walking across the street, you know, on the sidewalk, so there'll be people, kids coming across. So, you park, leave them on the sidewalk side. The thought is they get out of the car and they just go into parking up on.
This will also ensure availability for garbage and everything else to get collected without being blocked by traffic if it's there.
Fire hydrants are on that side too.
They're on no parking signs?
Yes.
Everything?
Except for down here by Myers Meadows, they're not. But that's, I'm not worried so much there as I am third.
I move Kevin with more.
Yeah, motion good.
Approve this, the drawing, yes?
Approve the drawing, I guess.
Second.
Your motion is second on favor?
Aye.
Close.
So, we probably need to come up with an overflow parking plan before we get too far into the bigger events. Or like, not this summer, but next summer or whatever, right, you need to, but.
Oh, this year, next year. Yeah, we'll figure something out.
Do we paint the no parking with like yellow or anything like that?
Yeah, we're, we'll talk about.
Yeah, what at the corner, or what at the, next.
And I'll, you know, there'll be some education here with this. My plan is to make this look a little better and then get it out to the parking area group. So, it goes out to all, everybody has an email with the parents and, um, we'll just work with them and.
This ballpark, this future ballpark. I've just, I've seen these kinds of parks turn into a whole zoo or anything.
Right.
You know, softball, baseball things. I don't know what's happening, but, but people tend to park everywhere when those kind of things go on. I wanna make sure we got it up, we're not blocking it, let's get to it.
So, how would you, how would I do it tonight, but do you, you discuss the ordinance scheme then? I mean, would you do that by city ordinance?
So, what I'll do is let me, let me read through it.
Yeah, okay.
And then, I'll just bring that back the next meeting and we can go through it.
So, you, um, Doug, you got a speed spot, right?
The speed spot? I've got it, yeah, the dad like.
Hold true.
The data things we, you can set out there.
Yeah, we do, right, we're in the area and see what's going on, what's going through.
So, at least we're fine.
Yeah, the most is gonna be obviously twenty-five from that same entrance, but I think.
Probably doing this as a school project right now. I'm just wondering if we answered all of these questions.
Yeah, he's working on a merit badge, so he's just trying to take good notes.
Well, this is.
If you get any questions, all you gotta do is ask them about anything. Stuff we've talked about.
Not yet, thank you.
And we're not gonna talk about those, the others.
All right. Question, discussion possible action and reference approving downtown reimbursement grant, reimbursement.
So, this is for Nina Scott, sitting down at the escape room, her old escape room building. Do you guys approve the arming? So, the reimbursement would be one thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. Are you?
Do approve. Second.
All right, your motion is second. On favor?
Aye.
Close. Resolution eleven, twenty twenty-five, approving budget statement from fiscal year twenty-six.
This is just a statement that we're, we have to put out in comparison to last year, um, that I was, the special council meeting was about.
And we have to take action.
Yeah, yeah, to approve the resolution for it.
So, the motion, I'm second.
Second.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Set public hearing for fiscal year twenty-six budget for April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
This is just for our official budget that, uh, we would do that night for the total budget for next year.
So, move.
The motion, you're second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Close. Resolution twelve, twenty twenty-five, approving part of the city funds into CDs or hand or money market.
Uh, so I was looking into, uh, Hills Bank. Um, they had a nice rate that the fire department, um, got for the association funds. And I met with, uh, Hills Bank to go over what kind of rate that we could get for the city. Uh, there's some project funds, for instance, um, the library has that donation fund that's in our savings. That we could put into a CD. I talked to Elizabeth and talked to their, um, financial person on the board. Um, they would like to put seventy thousand into a CD. It'd be a one-year CD at four percent return on the money. Um, I would like to put twenty thousand EMA funds into a CD for a year, which would bring back eight hundred dollars of interest money. That's who'd go to the city and then, um, I'm meeting with, uh, Lisa this week from YTT. But we have that, those funds sitting in the account for the, for the sports complex. And I'm thinking around five hundred thousand for that could be deposited into a CD, which would be twenty thousand, uh, back to us if we do that, so. Um, and then also on top of that, we have some other projects that are underway. Um, I would like to put, not to exceed one million of cash that we have into a money market. The money market, as you can see, is not quite as lucrative as the CD. Uh, it's a half a percent less. But what the nice thing is on the money market is you can draw from it at any time with no penalty. So, there's so many draws that you could have. So, if we need to spend some of that, those funds, um, we can do that. So, completely up to you. I just thought it was a way to make a little extra interest for the city and, um, put it towards some of the projects we have going.
What's the, what's the limit on FDIC for like a certificate, uh, that, I don't know, municipality, I don't know if there's, if there's difference in that, but isn't it two hundred and fifty thousand? I mean, I guess if the government goes, going up. Be very soft, right?
I'm not sure. I thought it was five, but maybe it's.
Is it? Okay.
I'm, I don't know.
It's pretty safe. I just didn't know if you need to put two different banks, two hundred and fifty each or something?
We could, if, if that's the case, I could, she said we can do as many as we want, so we can split that up.
Okay.
You wanna do two, uh, two, two hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, I think it'd still be the same. Any, I think it's still on. I don't know what that is.
It's two fifty per depositor.
Looks like that.
Just slowly, sure.
To me, it sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
If the FICA, it's a problem. There's two other banks down there in the area.
That's what I'm thinking, is just split it up.
Yeah.
Our work.
That'd be the same thing.
I mean, you, you could put, I mean, you could stay, do it all in one and just do it for three different accounts.
It's per depositor.
And put it in three different names.
Yeah.
Three different banks.
Okay, money and revenue.
Another motion.
Uh, I think I can make this up real quick. Maybe not.
Oh, we looked it up. It was two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
It is. Oh, okay. So, do we mind splitting into two separate CDs? I mean.
So, my question is, what would happen if?
No, one in Hills and one in.
Oh, yeah.
At a different institution.
Yeah, yeah.
And then.
The money's still there regardless.
Yeah, but if, but if.
If they're on separate banks and you've got separate insurance, if I see.
No, I know that, but what I'm saying is those funds are higher than that already, in that bank.
Yeah, it's.
Oh.
It's per depositor, per bank.
So, technically, we're over that threshold any day of the week already. You know what I'm saying?
They never thought.
If there's three million in bank and there's.
If it's.
Two fifty covered.
You're only two fifty covered, so.
CD or, uh, their residence accounts. I'm in favor of going ahead, but let's think if there's ways that we can be a little safer with the money. I don't think there's very high chance of losing anything, but.
Yeah, I'm also in favor of going forward, but just ask the question and cover our bases, if you would, please.
Yep, I can do that.
And I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-five, if you happen to already.
Your motion is second.
Second.
Mike.
Yes.
Ray.
Aye.
Rick. Doug.
Aye.
Aye.
During the final reading of ordinance oh-one, twenty twenty-five, update to chapter ninety-two, Water Ranks.
This is just the third reading?
Yeah, it is.
Motion to approve the third reading.
Your motion is second.
Second.
John.
Scott.
John.
Aye.
Rick. Mike.
Aye.
Kevin, or Nate.
Aye.
During the final reading of ordinance oh-two, twenty twenty-five, update to channel, chapter ninety-nine, Sewer Ranks.
Motion to approve the third reading.
Your motion is second.
Second.
Nate.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Rick. John.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Did you get all that over there?
I'm getting it.
Good, let me go where we just did.
All right. Correspondence?
Uh, nothing tonight.
City engineer report.
No.
I do not have anything for Kevin.
So, the court is.
Um, weather holds out tonight. Uh, we are gonna, we'll shut the intersection of South Monroe and South Street down by the park there, where the bus parking is going into the park. We had a water main break there. We wanna pour that back in concrete and get it opened up and fixed up. Um, should be just a couple of days down and we can get it back open again. Uh, the flag pole at Park and a couple of other flag poles, the ropes need replaced on them. We got some rope and we ordered some more, so if you see a flag pole down that doesn't have flags up, just don't worry. We're working on it and we're gonna get it taken care of. And then, we've been around and installed, uh, about thirty more radio reeds. So, we're getting down to just the trouble ones now that we are kinda hard to get into and get those done, so.
When you get all, when you get all the radio reeds out, do you just like have to go in certain spots and then it'll read?
Uh, yes and no. Um, weather conditions, for some reason, the colder it is, the harder it is for those batteries to get that signal out there because they're outside of the house. Some of the structures we haven't been able to get outside of with the radio, that we have to install it inside. And then, those we actually sometimes go back or even walk up to the house to get those occasionally. So, but yeah, for most part, we'll just have to hit the main up and downs.
Any questions for us? Person, right?
Uh, we will start spring soccer tomorrow for our second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade soccer players. And then, next Tuesday, we'll start all of our younger age groups. Um, and that'll all be out at the sports complex this year, so that's pretty exciting. Um, other than that, we'll have a spring cleanup on April twelfth for the ball dynamics. We do it yearly. Um, all the youth baseball and softball teams get together. We clean up the, uh, twigs, leaves, trash, route all the ball fields and then, uh, give them some donuts and milk afterwards for all their help. Um, it's usually a really goo, it's a good event for us and we usually have a really good turnout, so I would assume it'll be the same situation this year. Uh, and then the last thing I have is we'll have our Easter event on April nineteenth this year down at the city park. Uh, we do that every year as well, so that'll be another event that we have coming up.
Okay, for the ones that are weak in the mind, city park, what do we call it in the school?
Sports complex.
We call it sports complex, yeah.
I've been floating Nate Park.
Yeah, not by.
It's not landing.
Not by.
You make a big enough donation, you're a lord.
I'm not moneying it, Ken.
Throw the cash, man. We're, we're going.
Any questions for Greg? Library. Police department.
Nothing additional.
Inbooks.
Nothing to ruin tonight. Fire chief. Uh, they purchased the new mule, so that's in. They've ordered the slide-in, so it's gonna be about ten weeks before that comes in. Uh, so that'll be dual purpose once the flowers get installed downtown. Uh, I talked to Feld Fire. They're about a month behind on our build for four oh nine. They're hoping, uh, maybe at the end of April, first of May, when they deliver it. Uh, thank you to everyone who came to the St. Patrick's Day fundraiser and who sent in mailers. Uh, right now, so far, we're about eight thousand dollars, uh, fundraised for that, so thank you to everybody. And Saturday was extremely busy day. I think there was four different grass fires, um, multiple at one time. So, just be careful or if you feel something you can't handle, please get ahold of me and we can arrange to assist with that. That's all I have, fire related.
Are we, we're in band still for now?
Technically, we are till eight AM tomorrow.
Committee, do you have a chief? City manager.
Uh, a lot of meetings in the last couple of weeks, uh, the sports complex. Um, we've been helping Greg with sponsorships for the soccer fields and that's going extremely well. Um, I'm sure he'll have a presentation for that next meeting once that's finalized. And we had the P and Z meeting, um, also met with Dave, our engineer, um, and the owner of some property at the industrial park. Um, this is a future development, um, that's gonna be happening there, so that'll be coming up. Uh, quite a few nuisances. And helping Christina with the budget, um, finalization, getting that ready to go. And then, uh, next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm gonna go to the Iowa employment conference in the morning. That's all I have.
Good luck, Brandon. Christina.
Working on the budget and the week, um, the first week of April, not next week, the following week, I will be going to the IMF White House.
Any questions for Christina?
I think, um, just congratulations to my neighbor, Hale Apple, for getting fit for nationals. I do not hear what code C P R did. Got beat, um, I don't know, still he was there, so congratulations to him too.
Absolutely. Just have a question. We have a young, younger than normal person here. Um, that usually means it's some sort of work assignment. I was wondering what, what you're checking on with us.
I'm doing a S, um, DSA, scout requirement for communication merit badge.
Well, you came to a very good group.
Yeah, you're gonna get out of here early, yeah.
We could drag this out for hours if you want.
Well, we got.
Congratulations. Thanks very much for coming.
Anybody else have a comment or concerns?
Done.
I'm done. Um, just thank you for coming to the council meeting and, um, thank you to the Martins for making that property down there look very nice.
Thanks.
Needed that for a long time. Other than that, I don't know.
John?
Uh, Southeastland last year had one free meal in the, throughout the summer for kids, lunchtime. Uh, due to an anonymous donor and other fundraising, uh, they're trying to extend that to three meals, so that's all I have.
John?
Nothing.
And I'm ready to go meeting here.